Session of the Chavano Park City Council to order. Lee Powers will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pete Miller will lead us in the invocation. If you all would all please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on our great city, its citizens, its leaders and staff. We ask that you watch over our city employees and always keep them in your protection as they provide public service and safeguard our citizens. Be our reminder that it is good decisions that lead to good outcomes. We humbly ask for your guidance as city leaders, that you will bless us with the wisdom and clarity in all decisions that we make. History has shown that difficult times make strong men and women, and strong men and women make good times. Heavenly Father, be our reminder that when we embrace our challenges, we grow stronger in spirit. For it is strength in spirit that makes us strong men and women. For the state of our lives is nothing more than the reflection of our spirit. In your name we pray.
Amen. There being no citizens be heard. Brings us to item number four, City Council Comments. Buddy?
Welcome, everyone. Good to see everybody. Happy Fiesta.
Maggie? Maggie, you gotta get closer to your.
Very important. Nice to see everybody and enjoying the weather. And we welcome each and every one of you. Thank you.
Conrad?
Same. Good to see everyone. Beautiful day.
Pete?
Yeah, so we just celebrated Arbor Day this past week and just wanted to mention what a great success that was and thank our staff and citizens for making that such a great event.
And Lee?
Well, I'll echo the thank you to everyone. I see we have a good selection of our city employees back here in the back of the room. I must be in trouble. So, in the meantime, I hope everybody enjoys the cool weather, the unimaginably good weather we're having. And just everybody remember, drive safe and for goodness sakes hug somebody close to you.
Thank you, Lee. Brings us to item number five, Presentations, Commendations and Announcements. Item 5.1, Proclamation and Recognition of Congressman Tony Gonzalez. I've got a proclamation here from the citizens and the city council, the staff and the mayor of the city of Chavano Park. Whereas federal community project funding grants are selected through a congressional-directed application process to provide investment in local projects such as housing, homeless prevention, workforce training, public facilities, parks and other critical infrastructure and services. And whereas the city of Chavano Park has a longstanding drainage and street hazard challenges along De Zavala and having numerous other roads in substantial and substandard conditions. And whereas the city of Chavano Park made an application through Congressman Tony Gonzalez for approval of our project as a federal community project. And whereas because of the support of Congressman Gonzalez and his staff, on March 2023, the city was awarded $4 million in community project funding. And whereas the city of Chavano Park submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development the detailed grant application which is in process of final funding. And whereas the project could not have proceeded without the community project funding and is expected to begin in 2024. Now therefore, I Robert Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Chavano Park, wish to express our sincerest thanks and gratitude to Congressman Gonzalez and his staff. Congressman, we so appreciate it. And to present this proclamation, I'm going to invite all the council members to come forward so that we might shake your hand as you accept this proclamation.
They're gonna come front and center.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Great to see you. Yes, thank you. Yes, good to see you. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Appreciate it. This is going up in DC, to the office in DC. Yes, everyone. Yeah, I know. I know. Thank you. Thank you.
Got it. Three, two, and one. Got it.
Yes, he's the best. Can I say a few words, Steph?
Uh, if you can catch me on the report. Yes.
I'll do it up here. I think I'll do it up here.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, it is my absolute honor to serve us in Congress. And, you know, I represent a district that's larger than 30 states. There's 119 cities and towns in this district. And no kidding, Chavano Park is at the top of that list. And I can't thank the mayor and all the aldermen enough for everything you do, from the city manager to the police chief, to the fire chief, top to bottom. Y'all's community is absolutely incredible. And when we started talking about this program, it really was, what I've noticed in my time in Congress is, you pay into the system, but you never get money out of the system, right? And when we were talking about this project, what I really loved about it was the mayor's vision to keep your taxes as low as possible. And, but you also want to improve the infrastructure and build the community as it's growing. So you're in this balance, right? And you never want to overtax your population, your citizens, that are working so hard. That's what I loved about it, is you were looking ahead. You're fighting the city manager who worked so hard about it. And the last thing I'll say is this. Y'all are so amazing as far as a community. Y'all are helping other communities. We're working on community projects, communities that are hundreds of miles away, that really honestly should have no real connections or tie other than our office. And we have asked y'all, hey, can you help other communities fill out these projects? Because this paperwork, it's so thick, it's so difficult. It's meant for you not to get the money, right? And so not only were y'all able to successfully do that, very proud about that. And we'll work to get that over the finish line. But you are helping other communities. And once again, I cannot thank you enough for everything that y'all do. I appreciate it. Absolute honor to serve y'all in Congress and I can't wait for the next event. All right. Thank you.
Oh, the real goodies.
The important, for your lovely bride, the city of Chavano Park, I'd like for you to know, you can eclipse our bright future.
I like it.
For Chavano Park.
Three, two, and one.
And then of course, one for you as well.
Perfect. You're ready to roll.
Want to make sure you take care of that lovely.
I know. I know. She works hard. All right. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Brings us to item number 5.2, Proclamation, Cardboard Kids. Whereas over 300,000 children in Texas are reported as abused or neglected every year. And child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. And whereas during the Child Abuse Prevention Month of April 2014, Child Safe created the Cardboard Kids campaign to draw attention to the issue. Hundreds of thousands of adults have engaged in the difficult conversation about the long-term consequences of childhood trauma. And whereas in 2022, there were 5,416 confirmed cases of child abuse and neglect in Bear County. Each cardboard kid represents one of thousands of children that have been abused and neglected at the hands of adults in our community each year. And whereas the city of Chavano Park has supported the 2023 Cardboard Campaign by posting pictures of their cardboard kids in all the city's social media and displaying our cardboard kids during April 2023 Arbor Day. Now therefore, I Robert B. Warner, Mayor of the city of Chavano Park, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 2024 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Chavano Park, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse significantly in years to come. I have Brenda, who is going to come forward and accept the proclamation on behalf of National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And she's going to tell us about her cardboard children. Brenda, I'm going to come down there to give you your proclamation.
She's the mama.
All right. Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council. The city of Chavano Park participates in the Cardboard Kids program, which is a public awareness initiative to draw attention to the pervasiveness of child abuse. Each cardboard kid represents one of thousands of abused children in the San Antonio metropolitan area. So please allow me to introduce the 2024 Cardboard Kids. So from my left to my right, the Development Services Department proudly presents Bucky. Bucky is well-known for his great skill of building fine structures, including ginormous country stores and gas stations. He's also known for his love of children. Bucky would happily build an even more ginormous dam around the city to prevent any child abusers from entering. From the city manager's office, we have Ranger. Ranger has been well-trained in combat duty and was sent on many missions where he faced countless dangers. Ranger is now ready and able to protect and take on any adversary posing a threat to children in our community. The Chavano Park Police Department gladly presents Sheriff Calley. Sheriff Calley has devoted and committed her life to fighting off bandits and bad guys in nice and friendly corners. For years, she protected her community and children in the wild, wild west. Now Sheriff Calley, with her trusty horse Sparky by her side, will patrol and do the same for the city of Chavano Park. From the Public Works Department, we have Xavier Mini-X. Xavier is a very skilled man to have around. Not only does Xavier take care of all the residents in the city by repairing and maintaining the water system and public streets, while he is completing his work, he reports any suspicious activity to the Chavano Park Police Department. He takes the motto of a cardboard kid quite seriously. If you see something, say something. The Fire Department presents Water Rescue Wendy. No water is too fast or deep for this skilled rescue technician. When the water rises, from swimming and diving to operating a boat, Water Rescue Wendy understands the unique challenges of water emergencies and will be there to help. She's trained and ready to assist anyone in trouble, especially our children. And with a nod to our Assistant City Manager, the Administration Department presents three-time Super Bowl champion and MVP Patrick Mahomes. Patrick not only loves the game and his fans, he loves children too. Patrick is ready to fight, tackle and defend all children from child abuse and neglect. Although Curtis, in their most recent head-to-head, the Packers prevailed and you sported the green and gold, not the red and gold.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item number 5.3, Recognition of Performance for a City Employee, Officer Wallace, Police Department.
We're gonna, the chief and I are gonna tag-team this.
Okay.
So again, just for background, we've been doing a quarterly employee appreciation since basically March of 2022. And Officer Wallace joined us in November 2023. Chief nominated her and chief will provide some description. But Officer Wallace is the ninth individual to be recognized on a quarterly basis for this award. And so chief will read some information on that and we've got a little presentation for her.
So this quarter, I nominated Officer Megan Wallace for the Commitment to Excellence Award. Officer Wallace, like city manager said, began her employment November of last year as the city's new patrol and co-compliance officer. She completed her field training program in January and she hit the ground running right away. With, she conducted approximately 180 co-compliance investigations and inspections during the first quarter of the calendar year '24 just alone. In addition to her dual roles, duties and patrol and co-compliance officer, Officer Wallace conducts community policing efforts at least once a week at Blapman Elementary by spending an hour, a minimum of an hour, having lunch with the kids. In addition, Officer Wallace has brought, excuse me, to the department a tremendous amount of knowledge and remains eager to volunteer in several capacities, such as her construction of Sheriff Calley and the Police Department's Cardboard Kids contribution. The one to recognize her for these efforts.
Come on up here. Chief, come up and get a photo op here. This was started by Alderman Miller, but Alderman Miller has passed out on the staff these employee recognition. But we have a point for you. Commitment to Excellence. And if I had one way to describe you, I would say excellence is the way you lead everything you do. You've been a great addition to the Police Department and staff and you've made our lives, I think, a lot easier in terms of co-compliance and following that. So anyway, congratulations. Here's your point. All right. Big round of applause.
Thank you very much, Megan, for all that you do, chief. Bill. Brings us to item number six, Consent Agenda All Matters. Listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve and/or accept items 6.1 through 6.5?
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Conrad. Do we have a second? We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number seven, City Manager Report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more alderman. Coincident with each item listed, discussion will generally occur at the end of the regular agenda items. Do we have, would anyone like to pull any of items 7.1 through 7.6? There being no request. Brings us to item number eight, Regular Agenda Items. Discussion Action Update on City Phase 1B De Zavala and 1C Chavano Creek. Bill, it looks like it's only you today because the city engineer is out sick. So what can you share with us?
Well, I've got a long presentation and I'll probably try to abbreviate that. We had prepared to walk you through the detailed steps of how we went from Phase 1 and now we've divided Phase 1 into A, B, C and D. But I'm just gonna highlight just a couple of key points for brevity here purposes. In your packet, we talked about Phase 1 being the old side of Chavano Park on the west. And that's the construction that we have begun with D and D contractors. And then really with the federal project, which is $4 million, we're able to divide that into two portions of that. De Zavala Road, which is the drainage and the extension of bike lanes as well as sidewalks and then resurfacing that. But because of cost, projected cost savings, we know we're going to be able to do some reconstruction of Post Oak Way and Cinnamon Way in Chavano Creek. And how much we can do will be based upon the amount of bids that come in for the main project as well as the secondary project. Then, as we briefed you a couple of months ago, but it has not been approved, it's what do we do with the remaining bond money that we still have left? That's Phase 1D. And we staff owe you, once we get the final numbers of the cost of Phase 1 Alpha and the Phase 1 Charlie, what are we gonna have left over and how are we going to wisely spend that funds? And we're targeting Chavano Creek. What we talked about was some further reconstruction of some of the areas that are the poorest quality. And then the application of a top coat to allow that to last 15 years. Now, let's move forward really quickly. I want to go to next slide, next slide. I want to show you the parking lot options here. One thing that has changed is that last month or the month before, we briefed you on the requirement for a parking solution. And we asked our engineers to come up and look at several different areas. And one of the areas affects the Phase 1 Bravo streets projects. And so the idea was instead of putting a, what you're looking and also includes redoing the municipal overflow parking area. And so next month, we're going to give you a detailed briefing of all the parking options. But what I wanted to highlight here is that we asked the engineer to look at how many spaces you could save if we organized the parking on the municipal track along De Zavala Road and moved the sidewalk from the road to where the Muni Track sidewalk is now as it extends down towards Elm Springs. So the whole point of that is 85 spots. That's been changed since we briefed you last. And there'll be more details next month as we talk about the entire possibilities for parking and what we're gonna do once Northwest Military Highway is finished and we don't have that overflow parking and that on-street parking. So next slide. Again, 90% plan is complete. The WPAP has been approved. No significant changes. Next slide. CPS, no slot, no problems there. After we got the awarded grant, the grant is being executed by the HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. And we had to do a second application to the Housing and Urban Development Department. And we briefed you in January, February, on the proposed changes to that. Based upon your concurrence, we submitted that on the 28th of February. We received, and still left to go is the final approval of that, the guidance on the environmental assessment. And then we've got to do the environmental assessment and then we can go ahead and go out for bid. Next slide. Where's the email slide? Okay. We received today a notice that says there's four remaining items, which are very simple to do on the grant. The first one, actually, we'd already submitted and they must have missed that. So that one's no big deal. We signed a disclosure of lobbying activities. We didn't think we had to, but we've now completed that form. We voided a check and we sent that in so that they can deposit the funds on our account. And then we submitted a line item budget, but they wanted it in a different format. We completed that. And Curtis submitted that about 12:20 this afternoon. And so all the requirements we have have been met over there and just we're waiting on the final approval and then the funding of that $4 million. So again, we're in contact with a specific person from the HUD that's working these community developments and they've reviewed our packet. And so that's a clean slate from there. And I think, do we have one more slide? I think, oh yeah, this is the format. And just to remind you, we started out with a $15 million project and we asked for $5 million from the federal government. Our matching portion of the Phase 1 was gonna be the $10 million bonds that we have. We've modified those numbers a bit and we're now looking at $4 million from the federal government and then another 10.5 million from us to finish this up. And again, the final briefings to that will be probably in the next month or two as we start working in the approval, going out for bid, getting a contract bid, selecting them, doing town halls with our citizens and then finalizing the rest of the spending funding. So subject to your questions, that's the update.
Okay. This is an item that does not have any action. So we will open it up for discussion and questions from council members. Lee?
The 85 slots. That's brilliant idea, by the way. I assume that the sidewalk will come up against the stop point if people park head in?
Essentially, where you have the via stop right now, we're gonna, okay, it's really hard, should have had my pointer. But if you look up there, there's a gray squiggly line. It looks like a Z almost. The sidewalk will shoot straight into the municipal track about 10, 15 feet parallel and then connect to the existing track, trail that we currently have. And then that trail will be then concrete. We'll actually build that to a standard. It may have to even be wider than we normally have. It may have to be ADA. But that'll be an improvement in there. So, yeah, our current trail's six feet. So if we just do the same thing, that'll be.
So it'll be an all-weather surface?
That'll be concrete, is what I anticipate.
Nice.
And because it'll be more than a walking trail there, it'll be an access trail that people will be using all along De Zavala.
Yeah, Bill, I'd like to echo Alderman Powers' comments. I think this is a great idea as well. The only question that I've got is, has there been any consideration, instead of the parking spots going straight in, is angle those?
We can, we should ask the engineers to look at that. That probably makes a lot more sense from that standpoint. So I'll take a note of that.
Okay. Conrad?
I love the idea. I just, I recall the permeability when we widen this thing that will keep us from going into a little further into the... We would be.
The water pollution abatement plan, the water, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd be expanding it on that side. And do we cross the threshold then of having to do further?
That's a great point. We're gonna have to work with our engineers. I don't envision this being asphalt. I envision this being a natural, a natural surface and we'll have to permanently mark them somehow, I think.
Permeable?
Yes. We'll have to come up with a solution that we can maintain the WPAP, but we still have clear marking and it won't be, you know, a lot of work for our public works every time we do it. Still gotta be safe.
Maggie?
Okay. I'm looking at the interior, not the road. And we're gonna lose some trees there?
Yes, that's a different, that's a different, we're gonna brief that in detail.
Okay.
But next month, we plan to bring that into you. We'll talk parking. And we're gonna talk parking over across the street, over by the Fire Department.
Excellent.
We will talk in more detail this parking lot as well as De Zavala. And we'll probably hold off on any parking considerations for Bear Met 911 at this point in time. But I'll sort out whether we wanna, we want to be careful about that, that we don't lean too far forward. But yes, I mean ultimately, just to, you know, spoiler alert, we've got to do something to keep a safe parking environment and be able to meet the requirements for community events. And it's going to result in some loss of some trees. And I think we can still landscape it and maybe even plant trees to augment that so that we can replace it.
It still has foliage there. Yeah, so that's good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Buddy?
Again, I mean, it's a great idea. Not getting into the specific details, do you have kind of a synopsis on the timeline on the events that are gonna take place over the next year? As far as funding and startup and everything else?
I believe we'll be approved for funding in the next month and then it's the environmental assessment. And then, because call your engineering and KFW, call your engineers. They have a team that can do it internal. Then, I don't know what federal approval there will be, but let's just say that takes two or three months. We should be able to go out for bid in the summer and then solicit the bids, compete the bids and then award the bid. Maybe by fall, we got action going on. And that's probably not too bad because we're deconflicting the Northwest Military Highway issue and we're deconflicting for the most part the Phase 1 Alpha on the east side of Northwest Military Highway.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Lee?
Bill, has anyone done any topo on the piece of dirt across the street next to the firehouse? Has anybody gone in there and checked for elevations, drainage, existing walls? That sort of thing?
I personally walked it. The elevation is pretty flat. It does slope it towards the south a little bit. We did do a survey of the trees, so we know where all the big trees are, et cetera. And I've given them some redirected guidance, you know, so that, they've given us a couple drafts of that. We're continuing to work through that.
And where are you envision putting the curb cut?
What I think, it'll, first of all, it'll require text-out approval. And I believe the only curb cut that'll be approved is where the current curb cut is now.
Right.
Which is three, it's four fifths on our. Which is three, it's four fifths on our property, and one-fifth on the residential property next, and we'll have to sort that out. So we may have to move it over a little bit. If there's objection, that'll have to be worked. The initial proposal was in between the Saddle Tree intersection and the current curb cut. And what I know about text-out is they won't approve that because it's too close in proximity.
Okay. Bill, are we considering having an alternate exit or entrance point along Saddle Tree?
I didn't see that in the first draft. That's something that, I don't envision this is going to be a one-and-done. This is going to be, let's introduce it, and let's think through this. And it'll take a lot of brilliant minds to get good ideas and figure out how we're going to finalize this.
Well, I'm glad you're going to be working with engineers and not with me. If there's no questions, comments, let's go on to eight point two, Discussion Action Ordinance O. 2024-005, approving VIA's decision to repeal the application of the tax exemption of taxes on sales from VIA's entity area of telecommunications service and approves VIA's decision to impose such a tax on telecommunications services. This would be a first reading. I'm going to recognize Tom and you, Bill. Tom?
Hey, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for allowing us to come out this evening. You know, this presentation is really twofold. One is, I've been with VIA for about a year and a half. I started in November of 2022. Prior to my time at VIA, I was Chief of Staff to Precinct Three County Commissioner for both DeBarry and Barnard. I've spent a lot of time in public service, so bringing this, you know, that background to this role, I engage, I lead the government affairs and external communications. And so I don't know what the relationship was or the regularity with which VIA came out to partner cities before, but I'm trying, I want to get out here at least every two years, give you sort of a service update, let you know where we're going and where we've come from. So the first couple of slides is really just that. You know, right here on the front page, these are the five different services that we offer, you know, from our van pool on the far right side, yeah, it'd be your right side, too, all the way to the left side was our VIA Link program. We have four VIA Link zones now that we like to call our Uber-like service at a VIA price. So we have roughly four sixteen-square-mile areas that we pulled all the stops out of because they were running at sixty minutes plus, and we've replaced them with an on-call van service that wherever you are, you call it, it comes to you, picks you up there, takes you to your destination, all at a dollar thirty, which is the same price as our regular routed service. So that we just started introducing in 2020. And, you know, most of the city where we have sixty-minute frequency, we're looking at replacing with that service. I'm going to, you know, I don't want to, all right, good. I found the right button. So real fast, we just wanted to talk about, you know, obviously, the service benefits, your ridership, the service costs. We're going to run through how transit is funded in Texas, and then to ask is obviously the telecom issue. Real fast, the benefits of public transit are, you know, we're connecting people to jobs and opportunities. Sixty percent of our ridership are people going to an economic opportunity. So we're very, very proud of our ridership, every single year connecting people to those places. You know, one of our big benefits is all degree-granting entities within Bear County. We have a relationship with for U-Pass, our university pass, so it doesn't cost a student anything. The school actually pays for it, and all they have to do is show their student ID. They can get on any bus stop and get to where they need to go for class. You know, we offer independence to people in the disability community and the senior community. One of our best services is our VIA Trans service. It's our paratransit service. It's, you know, slightly more expensive, you know, to us solely because it's a great service that we need to offer. We help hundreds and thousands of people get to medical appointments every single year, and we're going to, we're going to do an origin and destination, you know, scatter plot for you on those people that use it within Chavano Park. You know, we help drive the local economy and support business. It's, you know, like I said, people are getting to job opportunities, and we like that they can get there. And every update that we're making to our system is we're trying to connect economic centers within Bear County. You know, we're very proud, we lower harmful emissions. We've, we don't, and all of our fair vehicles don't use diesel. We've completely transitioned to compressed natural gas, so we have the largest compressed natural gas refueling station in the entire country. We're, you know, CPS is biggest buyer of it, but we've removed, as an area of non-attainment, you know, I'm sure many of y'all are involved with the Alamo Area Council of Governments, we've removed ninety-seven percent of what would have been NOx emissions into our air in order to help us, you know, get back into, you know, into non-attainment, or out of non-attainment, back into attainment. This is a, you know, this is obviously our routed service to show you the service within here. We're currently in conversations with Commissioner Moody with our Route 97 to see if we can get that all the way up to the entrance at Camp Bullis, to extend that service up there to service our military. And like I said, the sixty-minute service, it's, all of our routes that are sixty-minute plus are under consideration for possible replacement with a VIA Link program. Our newest one inside the loop connects 151 to I-10, just inside the loop in that area, so it connects UTSA to the Lakeview College from ACCD. Sorry to admit, our, because of Northwest Military, our ridership is down in Chavano Park on our routed service, but as part of the 2020 ballot measure that we passed by sixty-eight percent of the vote, you know, citywide in the city of San Antonio, so that isn't imposed on y'all, but we're using it for our entire service area. We are doing what we refer to as a better bus program. We have seventy-seven different routes. We're reevaluate, we're reevaluating every single one of them, especially all of them that are thirty-minute plus, to find where we can find frequency and bring those times and numbers down. Our goal at the end of this project, which is, we're in the second year of this project, it's a four-year project, is to have every one of our routes below thirty minutes. We're starting with a thirty-minute frequency to see if we can bring that to thirty minutes or to fifteen minutes, and then with a sixty-minute frequency, see if we can bring it down to thirty minutes or less. As part of that reevaluation, we're also looking at, especially with the number of hundred-degree-plus days that we had last year, we're looking at adding new sheltered stops. Previously, the guideline was we had to have eight pickups a day at a specific stop. Some of that is getting thrown out the window just for, you know, too much sun, those sorts of things for our customers. So as soon as Northwest Military is clear, back up and running, all the stops that are currently there are going to be replaced, including the ones that are unsheltered, but we're going to be reevaluating all of them to add more sheltered stops. It just makes good sense. They won't be those ugly green ones with the round top. They'll be the sort of modern silver ones that have solar panels on the top, so as soon as the sun goes down, the lights automatically come on in order to, you know, to add protection to the riders as well. Like I said, VIA Trans service, obviously, you know, while it does cost twenty-three dollars a trip, that's because of the extra training that we give our drivers, and these exclusively cater to our disabled and senior citizens. You know, as, we did have some post-pandemic drop-off, but we're, you know, we're seeing about a nineteen, twenty percent increase year over year since the pandemic in our ridership, and that's both for our routed service and our VIA Trans service. So the 2023 numbers, as soon as we close out our books for both our financials and the ridership, I'm happy to report that back to you, it will be, you know, up, you know, because you have, you know, at least almost a hundred registered clients for VIA Trans. And now, the reason they have to be registered is it takes a doctor's note in order to be a VIA Trans rider. But it's, you know, this is a nice scatter plot, and you'll notice on that scatter plot, the dark circles are the origin trip. So you see a lot of folks from outside Chavano Park coming into Chavano Park. And then we also broke that down in a nice little, sort of, you know, even greater graphic for you here of where people are coming from to come to Chavano Park. Real, you know, sometimes people forget, you know, sometimes people in VIA even forget this, but I wanted to quickly just break down how transit is funded in the state of Texas. In 1973, the legislature authorized us to take up to one percent or one cent of the sales tax for transit. The local community in 1977, this was a county-wide vote, opted for, instead of the one percent, a half percent, so a half cent. So our sales tax breaks down to, you know, there's the six-point-two-five that goes to the state, the one percent that goes to cities, and then the one percent that's other. So we only get half of the other. That, the rest of that penny gets left. As you'll see, this is a breakdown of the city of San Antonio's with the subsequent elections that they had. The city of Chavano Park has access to that other half cent. So y'all actually have one-point-five percent of the sales tax, and we have the other half cent. So that's, that's how it gets funded, and y'all have had elections since 1977 on how that, that one and a half cent is going to be used for your own purposes. Again, the, just, we collect the half cent in Chavano Park that goes to fund VIA. But, you know, with the next slide that's coming up, in my research, just on making sure that VIA was collecting everything that we needed to collect, in 1987, the telecom companies, led by AT&amp;T, you know, in the state of Texas, went to the legislature and asked for an exemption from collecting and distributing sales tax on telecommunications services. That doesn't include cable television. At that time, it was pretty much just phone systems, you know, out-of-state calls, all those sorts of things. Now it does include internet services, and that's both on residential and commercial businesses. So we, since 1987, VIA has not been collecting, or the telecoms have not been collecting that half-cent sales tax for VIA. And so when they were authorized to not have to collect it, they had to include an administrative action from the local municipalities that if you remove that exemption through administrative action, then they have to start collecting it, and the comptroller will deliver it to us. With that as well, just checking the comptroller's website, Chavano Park has also been, not been receiving that. I know that's the next item on your agenda, but I'd just throw it out there. I guess about five weeks ago, I just met with the mayor and the city manager to let them know, hey, while we're not getting it, y'all aren't either. So if, if, if you would please exempt us, and hey, you should exempt yourself, you know, remove that exemption for yourself as well. So this is, you know, it's, the average cost is five cents for every ten dollars of a bill for VIA, or fifty cents on a hundred-dollar bill. Telecommunications services, both internet and cell phones, have gotten much more affordable since the exemption was put into place. So it's really just more of a, we'd like to collect the whole half cent on all services. And I have to pass this through seven small cities, including yourself, before I can get the city of San Antonio to pass it, to be able to collect for our entire service area. So.
Thank you very much. Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
And I didn't ask you in advance, Tom, but I don't believe that cities and municipalities and entities are getting any kind of franchise fee from these services either. At some point in time, that fell off.
Right.
And as well as the sales tax. And so we do get franchise fees from CPS and from other folks as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry, one last thing. This doesn't impact, if you remove the exemption for us, it does not impact your tax rate, any of that. It's solely, the voters voted in 1977 to levy this. In 1987, they found a workaround to try and, you know, get out of it. We would just like them to be put back with everybody else, including office buildings, restaurants, all that kind of stuff, and just, you know, pay the same amount.
Thank you very much, Tom. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance O. 2024-005, approving VIA's decision to repeal the application of the exemption of taxes on sales within VIA to, within VIA's entity area of telecommunications services and approve VIA's decision to impose such a tax on telecommunications services. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Buddy. We're now open for discussion. There being no discussion. Oops. Pete, Pete, okay, yes.
So, Tom, I've been on council for three years now, and this is the first time I've heard anybody come from VIA, so thank you very much for coming forward, bringing this presentation. The more we know, the better decisions we can make, so I really appreciate the information and the time that you've taken to do this.
Yeah. I learned a great lesson with Leon Valley last year. They just asked for an update, and it was a great cordial conversation, and so, you know, we have fourteen partner cities, and so we love all of our partners. Last thing we want is a donut in our service area, like we have with Hollywood Park, where we have a hard time getting from 281 to Blanco. And so, you know, we're, you know, we'll come out anytime y'all need us to. We're happy to be partners. And we had a blast at the Arbor Day event. It was, it was a lot of fun, and we, you know, we love coming and talking to folks because we were able to deliver a lot of information on everything that we're working on.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, if there are questions, comments, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Good to be with you today.
Appreciate it.
Okay, it, we're now on to item eight point three. Discussion Action Ordinance O. 2024-006, repealing the application of the exemption of sales on taxes of sales within the city of Chavano Park entity area of telecommunications, telecommunications services, and approve a decision to impose such a tax on telecommunications services. This will be a first reading. Bill?
Tom did a pretty good job of laying it all out, and I just remind you that section three twenty-one dot two ten of the Texas Tax Code does provide the authority from municipalities, including the city of Chavano Park, to repeal the application of the exemption from local sales and use taxes on the receipts for the sale of communication services within the city. So that's been established. I provided the references in your packet. What we're talking about is one-point-five cents per dollar, and I don't know exactly how much that would be, but I mean, if you did some back-of-the-math envelope, if you had seven hundred, if you had thirteen-hundred households and they had a hundred-dollar bill at each household, you know, that might be a dollar fifty per month times twelve months. You know, maybe you're talking, I mean, it's not much, it's incremental per household, but cumulatively, and you count the businesses, because there's probably a hundred and fifty businesses. You know, you're talking in the tens of thousands of dollars per year, but individually, in the tens and twenties dollars, you know, it's not a whole lot. But that's the tax implication. I've looked at this, I can't see any downs, downsides to this. I looked, and the city of Alamo Heights has passed a similar ordinance in 2019, and I think we'll see more cities passing this once they get told about it and they recognize the opportunity, especially in the light that we don't receive franchise fees.
Yeah. Your numbers would be at a hundred dollars per household, around, under, a little under eight thousand dollars a year. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance O. 2024-006, repealing the application of the exemption on taxes on sales within the city of Chavano Park entity area of telecommunications services and approval of a decision to impose such a tax on telecommunications services. This is a first reading. We have a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion from Buddy. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Pete. We're now open for discussion. Conrad?
Just a quick thought on this, we, and I think Tom said it best, you know, leaving a donut hole inside of this whole community we live in, it's not just our city, it's all the cities around us, this is a good idea to provide that and to help out.
Any other questions or comments? No other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Item eight point four, discussion update on town plan for person work group and resident feedback prior to the upcoming budget program process, development process. Bill? prior to the upcoming budget program process, development process. Bill?
Uh, we talked about this uh, last month in March. Just to remind you, the town plan was approved by city council in October of twenty twenty-three. In November of twenty twenty-three, council directed a four-man, uh, a four-person work group be established to provide uh, a method and means for getting feedback from the residents of Chavano Park on the town plan re- uh, implementation steps. And I think I briefed you before, but there are approximately fifty-eights um, actionable tasks that the town plan outlines under six focus areas. And as we go through the budget process, the idea was that we would get feedback from the residents and we'd be able to use that in terms of providing emphasis and focus on the uh, areas. So we, we conducted initial discussion on the March twenty-fifth city council meeting. Staff has been um, in, in coordination with several citizens, but also the four-man, the four-person working group. And we've basically developed a concept to invite thirty to thirty-five uh, respected individuals that have served in some capacity in Chavano Park to a feedback session. The idea is we would have a three, three and a half, four-hour work session one day. We'd have a, it would be over a lunch period time, probably somewhere like Pisano's. And uh, it would be a series of briefings. There would be a survey done to where we would be asking these folks, what's important to you? What's, what's not important in the town plan? Is there anything that we missed? And uh, I've engaged with a number of those residents and you know, and, and they wanna, I, they're, they're eager to help. But just like everyone else, most everyone's got busy lives and you're probably not looking at uh, a lot of people that want to get into a town plan redo. They want to look at uh, um, how can we provide you feedback based upon what we, what we understand in the community, et cetera? So I've been um, working with Alderman Miller and uh, Kukendal, as well as Mayor Warner in terms of what that might look at. We've come up with a, a draft list of these folks. I thought I would review with you, kind of get a consensus on the way ahead before I went all out and, and told everybody what was going on. But some of the folks that lead some of our committees and have been leaders in the women's club, et cetera, I've reached out and, and talked to them. And we've reached a kind of a consensus of a day that might be available. So first thing I did was I went to Pisano's because they've got an area which facilitates um, roundtable discussions or tables and it's big enough to provide a presentation. And then we can break into maybe five work groups associated with that. Five, five-person or six-person or four-person work groups will work. And then we've got an outline of a program that will last, and we have several options. We gotta finalize this th- three to four hours and do it all in one day. And the uh, the deliverables would be a prioritized list of what they think is important and some feedback on what might not be important. And there might be something that is uh, that comes up that we haven't thought about. But the date that is being pr- presented at uh, right now, uh, proposed is the third of June, the third of June. So that's uh, uh, I've, I've contacted five key leaders. They're all available that date. There maybe have to be some reshuffling, but the idea is to schedule out in, in advance to where people can make it happen. And so just think about getting twenty-five specific people all to be able to be available in town on one day. The idea is we're going to invite, say thirty-five, and if twenty-five show up, that'll be about the right number. So that's the current plan. Um, we think we're going to use Survey Monkey to do it so that we can uh, have it available either in advance where they take it and, and provide it to us in advance. And those that didn't take it in advance, they can um, do the paper survey there. We can input it in there. It'll correlate it all and then it'll, it'll organize it in such a fashion that we would be able to understand what's important, what's not important, and then present that from there.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill. Does anybody have any questions on what the working group is suggesting? Pete?
No question, just a comment. One of the things that, as we picked or looked at the group and the people, uh, tried to get a very diverse group. So when you have diversity like that, it always uh, or almost always brings in very good solutions. So really have gone across the city in different groups and, and looked for leaders.
Thank you, Pete. Anybody else? Okay, if nothing else, then it brings us to item eight point five, discussion action, consideration of calling a special meeting to canvass the May elections and/or reschedule the regular city council meeting. Um, Kristen, do you want to talk to us about this? Or do you want me to talk a little bit about that twenty thousand feet?
I just wanted to remind uh, council that on our usual scheduled appointment is the Memorial Day holiday. So city hall will be closed on that day. In addition, our main focus today is the canvassing of the election. Uh, according to statute, we're required to do that after three days after the election, but um, less than eleven days after the election. So that gives us a window. So you have the opportunity to call a special meeting or to reschedule your regular schedule, May calendar.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, and historically, as, as a council, we have foregone the special meeting opportunity and just simply rescheduled our regular city council meeting. Uh, Bill, do you have any objection to rescheduling our regular city council meeting to that date?
No, I think that uh, what we've proposed is the thirteenth of May. That's a Monday, so it's two weeks early. And looking at what's coming down the line in terms of agenda items, you know, there's not a, a burning issue that is, that's not going to be ripe for thirteen May, but it needs to be delayed. I think uh, there's, we've managed it uh, well enough to where we'll be able to provide some additional agenda items on thirteen May and we won't have a gap where we're missing some critical thing before the June meeting and we can then pick things up in June and, and go right back on our regular schedule.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to move the regular city council meeting from May the twenty-seventh to May the thirteenth? We have a motion from Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, would everybody please check their calendars and just make sure that the thirteenth works well enough?
It's still at the same time.
Same time. Same bat time, same bat place. Okay. Conrad?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, there being a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Item eight point six, discussion action, set city manager annual performance and salary review, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five five one zero seven four, personnel matters review. Uh, do I have a motion that we, that we retire into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five five one zero seven four?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete and a second from Conrad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. It is now seven twenty-nine and we are going into executive session. It is now eight oh three. We are returning from executive session held pursuant to Texas Government Code section five five one zero, zero seven four, personnel matters. No decisions were made, no votes were taken. This brings us to item number nine on our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Lee. We have a second from Conrad. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. We are adjourned.